...third special call meeting, executive session, January twenty-fourth, regular meeting, and January twenty-fourth work session. We're having discussions here. Awards and presentations. For those that may not know, but for those, you know, former Mayor Miro Maxi, you know, has passed away. So we have a proclamation declaring it Miro Maxi Day. And ultimately, we're gonna do something for Arbor Day, and we're new sent to to kick off a program that we've had about planting some trees in the city, like a significant tree, something that's pretty decent. We know that there's a number of other, you know, significant people from the city of Arbor, whether it's privately or business owners or others who have an interest in this program. And that's gonna help us, you know, plant some pretty nice trees in the public spaces that we have. And rather than just a series of trees wherever, you know, we're planting trees that's significant that means something, hopefully all of us, but at least there's some, so we can pull for that. Recognition of the City of Manchep. We went through, how many of you are made into the Black History of it? If you don't make it? You know, that was historic on our side in terms of the number of people we had, the amount of other that we raised from the private sector to make that happen. And it was a second event over at the exhibit hall. And, you know, while it's a slightly different event, it went exceptionally well. So very pleased with that. We're gonna recognize some of the staff for their efforts on that. You know, the irony of the third one is, you know, we had a fire event. I don't understand if it's that good if somebody was in it. So we've got a loss of property, but we do not have a loss of life. And thankful for that. But Danny and Mary Nell Rudd, who lived around John Robert Fred, you know, funded a program, and they give out a Fire Friday of the Year program every year. And this one will be for Fire Friday III, Senator Richard Davidson. That'll get, again, that's just an old, long time citizen who, you know, was real active in the community, ultimately.
We may need to move that one to the next meeting just because of the fire itself. I know they had eight people on the scene, and I think they sent home calling three additional ones, so yeah, maybe up in the air.
That's fine. We'd rather than be here with the...
The Avianary Project.
Take care of your phone.
And then new business, as approved of city manager's recommendation to accept the bid from RM Construction Development Proposals Repair and Duckkeep of the city of Woodbury, on time already, total hundred million, about three hundred and seventy dollars. Two, Danny, you wanna speed it down?
Sure. This was approved in the budget. Good evening, Mayor Nelson, when he gets that. That was approved in our budget last year. It was actually, I redid the bid, because the bid we had was from York Construction, who actually built the bridge itself. It was only good for thirty days, and it had been since last May, I believe I did that one, prior to the budget itself. So we redid it on bid net, included in documentation. You'll see the bid net, it actually pushes that out to a hundred and eighty-seven at this particular time, a hundred and eighty-seven different vendors to bid on it. The original bid came in at, I believe, two hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars with York Construction. I put that document in there as well for you. The bid will be, I'm suggesting we approve would be from RM Construction and, let's see, what's the rest of their name? RM Construction Development LLC. Theirs is a hundred and, gosh, I apologize, I'm not on my game tonight. It's a, it's a lot less than the other one, I can tell you. It's a hundred and sixty-five thousand, two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, which is roughly seventy-seven thousand dollars less than the previous bid. And it takes care of all the documents, all the required replacements and staining of the bridge, maintenance of the bridge. And I remind the mayor council and citizens and staff that is a city, really the obligation is to maintain that. It has not been maintained for over fourteen years. So due to staining, the capping, the shoring of the rip rack at the base of the bridge, the painting of the pylons, minor repair of the pylons, just to keep them in accordance with the Georgia DOT required standards.
One point of information, Jeff. The RM Construction Development is a hundred and ninety thousand, two hundred and seventy five.
That's correct, I'm sorry. The entirety of that bid, that includes the one sixty-nine, two seventy-five is just for the replacement of pickets, deck boards, hammer boards, pressure washing, re-staining. The additional twenty-five thousand is to do the great work at the bottom. So you see that broken out of the bid. I apologize, but that's correct. That's what you mean, I'm prepared.
Questions, Ms. Knight?
Off the top of your head, what type of warranty on this maintenance or repair will we have? What kind of flexibility do we have?
The materials are the, there are fifteen year warranty on that stain, I believe. And then on the maintenance itself, on the wood repair, because similar, they replace similar well-treated woods that we have currently on the bridge itself. So a match up to that, they replace the bolts. And on the works themselves, they offer one year warranty on that, on their actual construction work itself. But that says, and on the degrade and on the base of it, it's just where you've had some drainage issues. They could clear out one of the drainage bins down in there, the basins, it needs to be cleared out. And it back grave the base of it up against the pylons to keep that erosion down, which was nothing on the, on the Georgia DOT bridge inspection. Not a major issue, but something that could eventually become issue.
Thank you.
Ms. Tran?
About the warranty information, where do we find that on the bid?
If it is, then there's, and I can provide it for you. That was your conversation you had, and I'm pretty sure it's in the bid itself. There's quite a bit of information that you have on there. I'll get that for you, Ms. Tran. But that is on the material, I think that's the selection of the material itself, and maybe a post-conversation after the bid. Because it depends on the type of material we suggest, from the price range that they had, and the color patterns. So it's included in the actual materials itself, which were not purchased at the time of the bid submitted. So once we purchase it, I can give it as a product warranty.
And this contractor, we have planned several projects. This contractor that we, you recommend tonight, we have used, you know, to go projects recently, right?
Yes, ma'am. And if you look at the bids after sending that, that's why I like bid net. We put the parameters on what we're doing. So the bridge repaired, the wood repaired, wooden bridge, pavement, staining, whatever you're doing as far as the project goes, you can select those type of parameters. And it automatically sends out the bids to vendors. And vendors can also sign up to the bid net process and be notified when we put out any RFQs or anything of the nature. So when you look on there, I included that one, there's over a hundred and eighty-seven push-ups and emails to these folks to let them know that that was an opportunity. And we had one bid response. And that was the folks who are doing this, which obviously, since they're doing work here, they're paying attention to what we're pushing out on our piece, which is not unusual. And the work product has been, has been pretty much immaculate as far as what they've done for us in keeping our word.
So beside the warranty information now, is nothing the council package for tonight? Is there any information that we receive from the vendor for the bid of this specific project that's not provided to the council?
No, ma'am. And that's because the product wasn't selected. So it depends on the stain, and it depends on that. The stain that I was looking at, this was within the price parameter, has a fifteen year warranty. And I'll get you the color information, the color panels, and the enclosed warranty information as far as that product was. It's not from the actual contractor itself. That's more the one years from him, the, from the company, and the fifteen years just from the product, the stain, like you put on your bid. But it is a commercial grade stain.
Thank you. And I see in the record, this company is the company who, who was supposed to do the bathroom for our new conference event center that we just opened for Lunar New Year. And the presentation was that we're going to use that to have the bathroom ready. At the Lunar New Year, we did not have those bathroom ready, and we have a portable bathroom, portable bathroom outside. So who are we going to pay for that cost?
That's actually not his contractor. And the delays on that were related to us. So this is a contractor, they were not the ones who did the bathroom.
Okay.
The ones who actually did that, we can't relate. We incurred the cost of those because we caused the delays up to at least fourteen days by some internal thing we were trying to do. And delays are to be expected on that. It is what it is sometimes on construction. And supply delays get in.
So this is not the same contractor?
No.
Okay. And could I have a better understanding of why is that when we, the council, have to do our job to be informed, but ready to make a decision, contract we go to choose, is not receiving the package until two o'clock yesterday?
Well, I think this is pretty easy, because there's only one that's in here. But the information was provided, it was a bit delayed, but I don't think, is there a question particularly on any of the information in the bid?
We are using the SPOT. What is the SPOT balance that we voted this year? Is this under the budget?
It is. It was put in the budget, you all voted on this in the budget, and it was under the SPOS twenty-four, actually.
And have the city attorney reviewed the bid?
No, ma'am.
Thank you.
Ms. Qua?
Hello. Yeah, so you, I mean, after this major repair, do we have any, like, annual maintenance program, anything in place? Because, you know, like you say, we have this project, it's been so long, we haven't been taken care of. So in order for to keep it up, so we won't have to have any more major repair in the budget.
Absolutely. And that's next, I'm calling councilman. We have not had a maintenance plan on that. But an annual maintenance plan will be in place after this, just like we do with regular roadways, inspecting them. This is a little bit easier, because it's a wooden bridge. So if you have something that's, and let's just begin, and some of that was due to neglect and vandalism and the bridge being shut off. Part of the composition of the bridge, talking to consultants on bridge work, is that the rubber from the tires itself coming across the bridge is what maintains the nature of the actual surface of the bridge itself. So it's necessary, the soils from the tire and traffic are necessary to maintain the bridge in the nature it needs to be. We had the two inspections last year, unfortunately, because DOT does a bi-annual inspection, so they inspected it. They're sub engineers, because it's a DOT certified bridge. And we also had York come out, and they suggested they make this plan that I want to adopt for Public Works. So it'll be where we can do spot checks on the surface of the bridge, and anything else that comes up as far as staining, caps, et cetera. So I think you'll see, it being maintained, this is one expense that's unfortunate, but kind of the price we're paying, we don't maintain it for a decade.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Dean?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
You can?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. There's one thing on, in the, in the scope of work, something I, I'm not familiar with, when it says about sister, slot, or pipe, something, sister, you mean to support the pylons or what is that exactly?
I didn't understand, Missy, I'm sorry.
There's something in the scope of work for the, for the bridge, about this, I think it's something like a support for, you know, the pylons, if they need a sister support or something like that? Is that?
In the scope of work, so...
I'm not really good at that term.
Is that the stuff they're talking about wrapping the bottom of it?
Yeah, I think, part of that's gonna be the wrapping. We'll actually wrap the pylons, because there are some, as the stress and settling goes on with the pylons, there's, there's no, other than surface standings, there's no major damage to those. But if you wrap those, and then you seal it with the black kind of a pitch stain, that would be at the base of it, you match underneath the bridge, down into the ground, that would be black and wrapped. And then you'd also backfill that, where we've had some issues. So that is, and yes, that's in the scope of the work there.
Okay, got you, got you. Thank you. The other thing is, I notice you said that the work, all which, what we approve starts in April. Am I correct?
No, 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 on that bid that I did, I would like to have it completed by April. That's the deadline, I gave the vendors the bid on it, that we'd like to see it completed by April. Of course, you know, that's subject to a lot of different things. So weather and materials and other things, that nature, it would be nice if I had done by April.
Right, okay. And I did see buildings, they said they were gonna need an enclosure for the equipment. Is that it?
An enclosure for the equipment for doing the, the bridge work itself?
Well, they, you know, when they leave there, bring their equipment, so they'll be leaving it open, and they're requesting that we build an enclosure.
Well, I think there's just a, just like it is, we will enclose, I'll probably, just the gate off in that turnaround area, right past the shops, is what they were talking about doing. And then there is a, there is a necessity for water supply that we have out there, and I believe, that's got that covered. So we're gonna have a water truck out there for them to be able to hold the water for the pressure washing. But the equipment, that's what they're probably doing, that enclosure, right? Okay. So yeah, we'll do an enclosure in that little cul-de-sac past the last shops there off the bridge.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, sir.
And I have one more question. Do you want to do this, to ask earlier? So on the solidities of my audit, it has, you provide us the list of all the contractors who looked at the job opportunity. So in that report, the column say, opportunity, opportunity match. What does that mean? How, how is that criteria established for match and match?
Like I said initially, I can set on bid net, like, we're doing a bridge repair, road repair, it requires treated, whether it requires staining, requires spanning of the bridge, engineer work. I set those parameters based on the project that we're doing. So that says, that's where they match the opportunities with what we're doing. So if I'm asking for a concrete, they're not gonna give me a parameter. So it just matches up what they do basically for the profession, what they're licensed for, and what they're insured for.
So the system will match with the...
Correct.
Qualification of the contractor with the criteria that we set up for, what type of contractor are we searching for?
Right. I just set the general parameters on it, because I'm obviously not a contractor myself, and I know what kind of what we're doing, and what we're looking for. So as you set down the parameters and the scope of the project, it sets those as well and matches it. And I've got it set for the southeast, so I think I've got South Carolina, North Carolina, Tennessee, Alabama, Florida, and Georgia. So it pulls from those areas and sends out matched qualifications, and that's where I think you see a hundred and eighty-seven or a hundred and eighty-nine people that had emails sent to them. And you see actually on the audit, which I offered on all the bids, who opened it, who looked at it, if they submitted a bid, if they did anything, if they asked any questions, this tracks everything. So it makes it a very fair, equitable, and transparent way of soliciting bids.
Okay. And the column say document downloaded. What are they downloading?
It's a bid proposal.
Oh, the, the package of the bid proposal?
Yes, ma'am. Because it's electronically matched, and if you keep on going, you'll see where we opened it, you click open, and we publish results, and it's all as transparent as it can be.
So if the, I'm looking at the post-line, say, opportunity match, it means the qualification of this contract match with the criteria that we set up for this bid? And if it say document downloaded, there's a line between the, this contractor, it not download bid document?
Right. It puts a document downloaded, and they didn't download either my RP, RFQ, or whatever we're putting out here, or if they didn't download their bid either. So if they did download something, it would actually put a monitor, a number out there that they did, and then you could look down and see what they submitted, or if they just submitted questions. Because I can also put questions that are viewable by everybody who's received this email. So they can go in and look at this particular RP. If there's questions, I answer the questions, or whoever the expert is, answers a question on it, puts it out there, and everybody can see what the question responsible is.
Thank you. And I would like to raise a remark here for Jeff, because when he came in, before he came in, we just spending the money to inspect the bridge. Thank you for coming in with another saying that the Georgia DOT would do it for us, would no cost. And thank you for providing back to our team that we have, we send the tax on with, we change.
Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate that.
No other comments? Thanks, Jeff. Item two is to appoint Tom Kirkright as an associate judge for the Long District Court.
Sure. I think the best person to talk to this is Tom Kirkright, who's here in the audience, and he stepped forward. I'll give you a brief on this one. We're just looking to add to our associate judge pool. As you all know, we have, currently Crandall is our, is our chief judge, and then we have Jenny, we have Judge Chapman. And Jenny does the majority of our regular traffic hearings, and is doing a great job on that. Chapman is one who fills in for environmental court, which is more or less code enforcement and those type of things. Doesn't have quite the flexibility and openness in his schedule, so we're just looking to kind of supplement that with an additional person. And I think you'll find Mr. Kirkright's pedigree matches what we need here. If you want to step forward, sir. This is Mr. Tom Kirkright.
More, sir. Counsel, look back, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Thank you for having me and considering me. I have been in this court on a couple of occasions as a acting solicitor here. I have other jobs that I do throughout the judiciary. This will be my first appointment to the bench, so I'm excited. It's something I take very seriously. My career, I've, I've been a police officer for the last thirty-five years, and a lawyer for the last four and a half, five years. Retired from the federal government, I was a federal air marshal, and I retired from that after, after twenty years from nine eleven. I think the biggest thing that I bring to the table is, is common sense, big judgment over a lifetime of experience, that I, I have no preconceived notions. I hear the facts. I look at the opinions, I, I hear from the, from all sides, and then render an opinion that's, that's, in my opinion, fair and just. That's the only way I can, can do that job. And I understand that, you know, not all the time, everything is, is black and white, but we live in a world of gray, and that gray has to be considered sometimes. So I am, I am here, and would eagerly serve in that capacity. I look forward to it, and I think I would do a good job for you and represent the city more well.
Thank you, sir. Comments? Ms. Knight?
I don't have any questions. Your, your resume is, you know, pretty extensive, and you can clearly see that the, there's a context of experience that you have, you know, having ability to, so I don't have any questions.
Ms. Tran?
I have no questions. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Qua?
Yes, I, I thank you for your service throughout your lifetime. And the only question I have, in terms of, you know, even in, in the metro and the block department area, and then you said that you, in this field, in the last five and a half years or so, who else you currently serve as a judge?
Sir, I was, I was the city attorney in the city of Woodbury, with those as prosecutor there, and your solicitor. I'm currently serving as the associate solicitor in the city of Griffin, and I serve as a backup solicitor here in Clayton County, with Mr. Patrick. He has a meeting, or he asked if the out of court has a, a conflict. So I've, I've got time on both sides. This will be my first time actually sitting on the bench. I am prepared for it. I, I, my life is a little different than most lawyers, I didn't go to law school till I was fifty-two, and now that I'm retired, and, and I found my second career, I'm absolutely looking forward to the, the chance to serve. I've been here in Clayton County, Hickory County, Fayette County for the last almost forty years, and I'm committed to seeing growth, and I'm committed to doing the right thing for the right reasons.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Dean?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Kirkright, how are you?
Good evening, Ms. Dean, I'm fine, thank you, ma'am.
Good, good. And I concur with the councilwoman, I expensive background that you have here on your resume, and, and for this. One question that I have, I'd like to know, you know, with respect to juvenile, what type of, you know, program, or what are you looking to clear the slate, or how are you gonna deal with, you know, that, that situation with juveniles?
Kirk, again, I can't, I served in the military, I don't hear as well. The question was about juvenile offenders, is that correct, ma'am? I guess.
Yes, we have, we have.
Yes, ma'am. I, I think that, you know, I, I certainly believe that, that good people do dumb things once in a while, and that that's not where people start out. And I truly believe that the more we work with younger people in a preventative and a corrective manner, the, the less likely they are to, I can see them as an adult. So I'm all for working with youthful offenders and non-youthful offenders, people who, you know, just haven't, don't have that chance and that opportunity and things of that nature. I, I wanna see, I don't wanna see people end up being adult offenders. I would rather deal with them as a juvenile, when, number one is, is it's not a permanent record, number two is, they can overcome that, and, and number three is, I, I think that as a community, not just from the bench, but we have an obligation to mentor and, and help folks become better citizens, and do that through modeling behavior and, and setting that example. I would have no problem sitting down with kids, I work with Clayton youth folks, we had a, a meeting two Saturdays ago, Madam District Attorney and Mr. Charles Brooks, its Solicitor General, had a great thing. We had some wonderful kids in there. And when I looked around, I looked, okay, at the thirty-five or forty folks, we had that room, Clayton Education, is, what about the thirty-five or forty that aren't here that probably need our help, that probably could do that? And we could help those folks in the past, or help those, you know, young children, kids, find a better path. I'm committed to that one hundred percent. And I, I, I definitely understand that there are a lot of children, there are a lot of kids that need that, hey, I didn't think of that, or get that paradigm shift a little bit, or get that, you know, I constantly say this, you never know what somebody's struggling with, be kind to everybody. And that may be just the one thing that sets it apart, or makes it different, or gives them that focus, or, or they realize that maybe I'm not gonna go to college, but I can get a, I can get a, another job, I can get a career, I can get a vocation, things of that nature. So I'm very much committed to youth, wherever I found them, I count them. And it's one of the better things I like doing, is going to schools and, and talking to kids and saying, okay, look, if a big dummy like me can make it, so can you. So I hope that answered your question, Ms. Dean.
I get that, and I appreciate your answer. I think that's a great, a great thing. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'm gonna do items three and four together, because they're both surplus properties, one is just sent in from the police department, which is a two thousand and fourteen police interceptors today, and a twelve, high mileage, ninety-five thousand, one hundred and ninety-six, and it's, the sale will go back to the general fund, I'll resume it back, and the other one's Public Works, cleaning up that stuff, he's been in that backyard for a while. Sold nineteen ninety-nine Ford F Series truck with a shipper bed, a two thousand and one Ford Subaru duty truck, abandoned model, two thousand shipper, nineteen ninety-five trailer, craft trailer, deep parcel, scag riding mowers, and items not have been repaired or cause to repair, and authorities may actually be back. Questions, Ms. Ann?
No questions.
Ms. Tran?
No questions.
Ms. Qua? You have any questions?
I have no comment.
Okay, thanks. Ms. Dean?
All right, I'd like to, I wouldn't see a question.
Oh, no, it says there's surplus property here for both the police department and Public Works, Public Works has all accepted, we sit back there for a while, we're just gonna sell it at whatever we can get for it, and get it off.
Okay, you're, I'm not hearing you clearly, you're speaking of the surplus, is that right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I have no, no question on that.
Excellent. Second reading going on, the medical ordinances, the medical ordinances pertains to general government, chapter, criminal organization, miscellaneous regulations, records act, defensive officers and employees to admit for purposes. That's the second reading of that particular ordinance, and I'll read motion on that, we'll have discussions on that. General comments, we'll have an executive session to discuss personnel matters and perilous state, and then we'll start our regular session. I highly recommend that you drink some of this rather antiquated coffee. It's... It's got me rather lethargic, and I'm just, you know, can't wait to get another cup. But take us about two minutes, and then we'll start our city council.